Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's December 2nd, 2025 City Council meeting. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. This time, we're going to call on Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
Let's pray. We come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a city, and further the bonds of our community. Be with our staff as they continue to strive to provide the highest level of service possible into our citizens, and be with our newly-elected council members as they take office tonight. In your name, we pray and be with us, be with all of us who have served on this board, but also all the people that come into the board now. Again, we bring all the wisdom in the world to them and wish nothing but the best. And God, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening is special recognition of elected officials. At this time, I want to announce special recognitions for Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen and Councilmember Ronnie Wall. I do have a few prepared remarks, and then I've got some personal comments I want to make. We're going to have other council chime in as well, but we do want to recognize those two special gentlemen this evening. The community is defined by the passion and dedication of its residents. This evening, two leaders, Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen and City Councilmember Ronnie Wall, truly embody what that spirit is, and they both have served this community well for many years. They have been champions in supporting city staff, economic development, improving our parks, downtown revitalization, supporting local businesses, transportation initiatives, housing initiatives, recreational sports projects that will thrive for years to come, and both have an unwavering dedication to seeing a project through for the good of our community and the good of our residents. They also place safety of this community at the top of their priorities by supporting water resources, public works, law enforcement, and fire services. During their leadership, the Water Resources Department has been leading the way for the reduction of PFAS levels. The Burlington Police Department received Law Enforcement Agency of the Year in 2024, and our Burlington Fire Department received an ISO Class 1 ranking in 2023, which is the best and highest any department can receive. It is my pleasure to recognize two of the finest gentlemen you'll ever meet who have tirelessly worked to make Burlington a better place for all of us. Please help me in giving a warm round of applause for our Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen and Councilmember Ronnie Wall. Thank you, guys. We thank them for their dedication and to the Burlington community during their years of service, their recent terms, and well beyond that, the previous service to the city of Burlington. Now, a few personal remarks. If I want to talk about Councilmember Ronnie Wall for just a moment, Ronnie was instrumental in convincing me to run for office in 2007. I still remember the evening he and I had dinner together along with another friend, and he encouraged me to run. He led me to believe that I had something that I could provide to the city of Burlington that maybe I didn't even know I had. And that's what, that's the highest form of leadership you can possibly have when you can inspire someone else to do the same. For eight years, I worked with Ronnie as mayor, and I watched him set a tone. He exemplified professionalism. He had quick meetings. He did not like long meetings. He believed in equal representation, and he had a true nonpartisan approach to municipal politics, which I learned to embrace and cherish, and it is at the core of who I've been during my 18 years. He became not only a colleague over that period of time, and certainly throughout all of our history together, but he also became a best friend. And that's unique in and of itself. When the relationship starts in one direction and ends in another, that's special. He's one of those people that I know in my heart of hearts, if I picked up the phone and called him and needed something, no question, he'd be there. So, he had a great career in public education. He extended that into politics, and then he reinvented himself in public education again, and then he reinvented himself in politics again. That's phenomenal. On a lighter note, I'm not sure he appreciated my thick work session agendas.
True.
He had a little bit of that, and he certainly did not like the closed meetings.
True.
But at the end of the day, even though he says true, he supported me as a mayor, and I love him for it. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Yep. Counsel?
Mayor, thank you very much. There's a lot of remarks that you made that I certainly would have made. I will say this, that I've, you know, been here and had the pleasure to serve with Ronnie, both as a staff person and as a city attorney, you know, when he was mayor, and also served as a colleague on this city council. He was always available. In other words, if you need me, he said, "Call me." And he was always willing, and always open, and he was always what I call a straight shooter. You know, he said, "I'm gonna tell you exactly..."
He'd be too straight.
Yeah. He said, "I'm gonna tell you exactly how I feel." I said, "Ronnie," I said, "I certainly appreciate that." And I said, "I think we can get down to business if you do that." We did. We've always had that kind of relationship, and just as with you. He always said, "If I can help you in any way, I'll be there. You know, you just call me." One thing I will say, though, that I think Ronnie will miss is David Hussman's closed sessions. He won't admit it here, but, you know, it's sort of a standing joke. Of course, Ronnie and I feel both pretty much the same about that, because it's, they got a little long at times, but in any event...
True.
Yeah. He would say that, you know, "We gotta," he said, "Bob, we gotta move them along here." So, anyway, Ronnie, I want to tell you, my friend, I really appreciate working with you, knowing you. I appreciate your friendship, and really, it's been my pleasure to serve with you in both capacities, as a staff person, as a colleague on this city council, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I didn't realize all of this was going to be on the agenda.
It's on my agenda. It's just not on your agenda.
Yeah, okay. I thought we were going to be out of here by 6:15.
That's not happening. Wanting to comment?
Being a new council member and coming into this realm, I count it as a blessing to be able to learn under you guys. Someone who has given 20 and more years in this business, you know, with our city. I couldn't have had a better leadership team to follow and to learn from. So, my two years, even though I've been quiet and just sitting back and learning, I count that as a blessing, and I appreciate you. Wall, I love that. I love the fact that you are a straight shooter. Quick, because that's me. Get down to business, and Harold, your heart. I know you care for Burlington. Thank you for your service, and your heart reminds me of me, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Harold, any comments for Wall?
Well, my first endeavor with Ronnie Wall was when he was, I was in Parks and Rec. And Ronnie, ball playing, worked with two guys, Tommy Spoons and Tommy Cole. And he drug our ball fields in the summer. So, you know, Wall's attire was always very informal.
Very.
Very informal. Back in the day, when, let's say, safety standards was not nearly as important as they are now.
We didn't have any.
We would have a trailer and a tractor, and Wall would be sitting back. And eventually, a story I'll tell you is that there was a, we had a carryall vehicle. It was, in those days, they had three seats in it. And they took one of the seats out of the vehicle and put it on a trailer.
That's correct.
And those guys would be riding down the street on the trailer, having the biggest time in the world, not making a heck of a lot of money back in those days, believe me. It was not for money what they did. But you wouldn't believe the camaraderie ship that they formed as a group, and it was by department, and also with the many participants who participated in the various activities we were involved in. Tony, you were here. You saw that happen, and it was a really cool time to see these people together. So, Wall, you were pretty cool.
Well, thank you for that. But the rest of that story is, we were on South Mevene Street going across Maple Avenue, and the trailer came unhitched from the tractor. And we went flying and hit that curb, and the tongue of the trailer hit the curb, and we go flying up. Luckily, we didn't, we didn't get hurt, but we didn't really care. It was amazing that we didn't. But that was another story that Tony really didn't like, with Duke, Tommy Cole, Tommy Spoon, Ronnie Wall. Unbelievable.
Well, wanting to give Harold the same roasting, so to speak. I started with boards and commissions in 2000, give or take. So, Harold's had the dubious task of educating me for 25 years. He got me when I was really, really young and really, really green, and he probably would tell you today, I'm not much further along. But he's had me the entire time. When I first got elected as city manager, it was incumbent upon Harold to educate me. Everyone knew coming into office, certainly, there is a learning curve, both historical and throughout protocol. And Harold had to educate me on what a council manager form of government was, that you just didn't walk in and do whatever you wanted to. There is a council manager form of government. There is a law of order and rules of governance. And he and Councilmember Ward at the time, who was our city attorney, both had to spend a lot of time with me. But the time and patience that Harold showed, and the many meetings that he had with me in his office, and I hope Harold will tell you, I was a good student and took him serious. But he understood our city from multiple levels, and he shared that as if he was a neighbor, or as if he was someone in your family, or someone you had known forever. And we knew who each other was, but we were not close. And Harold just became a different figure to me, and he has been ever since. When Harold speaks, he's always had my undivided attention. Now, Ronnie, not so much, but when Harold speaks, he's got my undivided attention.
Man, it's a nice Monday. Hurry up. I'm glad my wife's not here tonight. I don't think.
Harold and I have been through major weather events, as things would have it. We've been through great recessions. We've looked at budgets. We didn't know how to make work, and somehow or another, we figured it out. We've been through pandemics. We've been through ups and downs of over two decades. And got scars to prove it, probably, but we also have some pretty good stories to tell on how we navigated through things. And the one thing about it is, we've hit a tough time, and I would look at Harold, and I'd say, "Harold, what do you think?" And he'd say, "You remember in 2010, when such and such and such and such?" And I'd say, "I got it. I got it." That's priceless as you're trying to make key decisions. But Harold has given his employment career, and then his post-employment career, to elected service. And just like Ronnie, Harold embodies what a true public servant is. And Harold, I want to say I love you and I appreciate you, buddy. Thank you.
Well, one story about Jim that I recall very vividly. He had just got elected. He had not been sworn in, and we were in the process then of a major expansion of the city to the west with University Drive. I recall vividly in the office in there, having a map that we laid out on the floor, showing where University Drive would, how it would intersect with South Church Street, and then what we thought the development would look like one day. Well, it made it, except for one piece of property that I think soon will be developed.
That's right.
And I can always recall that. But what I remember vividly was, Jim was in the floor with us. And that's what makes a difference in terms of a staff, in terms of a board. You've got to work together. It's a team. Some of us played sports a long time ago, and we value that concept of being part of a team. If you don't do that, you're not going to be very successful. That's it. Straight up. So, you know, it was, it was really cool times, and Jim is a, let me say this, Jim's a brilliant man.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait a minute. Why are we talking about Mayor Butler when he was talking about you?
It's our animal in here now. And Wall was one of the nicest, finest people you've ever met.
Yeah, right.
Believe it like that. You can take it. But Walk can mow grass better than anybody else can. We'll tell you that all.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But it's been, it's been a good time here, and it's, you learn a lot in various capacities in the city government. I've had the pleasure, when I retired, and I still do, work for the League of Municipalities. In that position, you work with a lot of mid-sized, smaller communities who face real economic challenges. And that's quite a bit different, and it makes us, it makes me appreciate what we have here to see what other people are dealing with. And there's no easy fixes to any of that. But it's been great. I've enjoyed this. I lived here all my life, since college. I graduated and came here, met my wife here in there, so raised two kids, been very successful. Got three grandkids now. So, it's, we've had a good life. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Bobby, comments?
Yeah, let me pick up. Harold and I go way back, too. In other words, I had the privilege and honor, quite frankly, of working with him as the attorney. You know, Harold was in the wreck and parks, and we had a lot of dealings then, and we had even more so when he became the city manager. Some of the stories that he and I, and some of the deals we had to work on, is not really for public dissemination. So, but in any event, I won't get into any of those. But Harold inherited, you know, some difficult situations, you know, and he always had an attitude that we're going to make this thing work. And of course, our offices right beside each other, and he'd come over, or I'd come over to him, would have a problem, and we both, we wound up, we said, "We're going, we're going to figure out how to make this thing work." His attitude was, you know, to make this thing work. And I always appreciated that thing, because it was on the positive. You know, we knew we had to do something with it. He had the attitude, we're going to stick with it, we're going to make it work. And I've always appreciated about Harold. And of course, I've had the privilege of serving with him as a colleague on the city council. And to pick up on your remark, Mayor, is that he really is an epitome, you know, of a public servant. You know, he dedicated his entire life, you know, to serve in the public, and I sincerely appreciate it. I appreciate Harold's friendship. I appreciate all the things that he has done for the city. A lot of those things, people are not even aware of, but I lived them. I was here. And Harold, I really appreciate, you know, all you've done. Thank you very much.
Want anything? Okay. Ronnie, you want to give him?
I'm gonna give a brief statement, because time is ticking. And my brief statement goes something like this. As a former city council member and a mayor, Harold did a great job when he was in the manager's office by protecting the council. He would never let people get too ugly, the mean, the people that were just, wanted to say something ugly about us, and they wanted to do it in public, he would always take care of us. And I will never forget that. Good man, good person, works hard, tries hard, and I appreciate you very much.
Any farting comments, gentlemen? If not, I'll put a little plaque up. We're going to, any other comments?
No.
Okay. Beverly, you have? Presented to Harold T.O. in recognition of your commitment and valued contribution to the city of Burlington and its residents through your dedicated service as a council member 2017 to 2021, Mayor Pro Tem 2021 to 2025, by the Burlington City Council, December 2nd, 2025. Congratulations. Presented to Ronnie K. Wald in recognition of your commitment and valued contributions to the city of Burlington and its residents through your dedicated service as a council member 2021 through 2025, by the Burlington City Council, December 2nd, 2025. And gentlemen, let's go over, I think we're going to try to do a photo op here in front of the seat, if that's possible. Way to get a setup here. Let's still give them one more round of applause. Next this evening, I'm going to call on Councilmember Bob Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, on behalf of the Burlington City Council, it is my distinct privilege to introduce and recognize a dedicated public servant who has demonstrated exceptional leadership and vision for our community. The growth and progress we have experienced over the years are a testament to his commitment. Please join with me in recognizing the Honorable Mayor Jim Butler as we commemorate his leadership by issuing a proclamation in his honor for his service to the city of Burlington. At this time, I would ask Councilmember Bigelow to please begin with our proclamation.
A proclamation in recognition of Mayor Jim Butler, whereas Mayor Jim Butler has served the city of Burlington for decades, provided exceptional leadership, vision, and commitment that has profoundly impacted the city of Burlington and the greater region. And whereas throughout his tenure in public service, he has demonstrated unwavering dedication to the community, serving as mayor of Burlington from 2021 through December 2025, and previously as a council member from 2007 through 2011, and also again, 2013 through 2021.
Whereas Mayor Butler has led with integrity, collaboration, and focus on results, including prior service as a traffic commission member 2001 to 2007, which reflects a longstanding investment in the city's infrastructure, safety, and which, and livability, values that have carried through every level of his civic engagement. And whereas during his years of leadership, initiatives have come to fruition, including the launch of municipal bus system, modernization of the city's development rules, implementation of significant sewer upgrades in response to the Jordan Lake rules, U.S. Army action toward remediation contamination at Western Lacrim voter approval of 68.5 million in general obligation bonds, transformation in several recreation facilities, including the historic carousel and the Burlington Athletic Stadium, and recruitment of the largest economic development project in Burlington's history, with the odd hold, Dale Hayes USA Distribution Center on North Carolina Highway 61. Ann?
Whereas beyond Mayor Butler's municipal leadership, he has made significant contributions regionally and statewide. As a member of the Board of Trustees for Alamance County, Alamance Community College, and executive board member of the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, and a trustee for the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, he has worked to advance education, economic growth, and efficient transportation systems across North Carolina. His participation in, in the Tax and Finance Legislative Action Committee of the NC League of Municipalities and the Burlington Graham MPO, TAC Board further demonstrates his thoughtful approach to policy, fiscal responsibility, and regional planning.
Now, therefore, I may approach Jim Harold Owen and the Burlington City Council do hereby wish to express our deep appreciation for Mayor Jim Butler's unwavering service by awarding him a key to him a key to the city of Burlington. He truly is an ideal recipient and Burlington is a better place because of his legacy, his integrity, his humility, and his tireless effort to commit to the lives of others. He's a wonderful family person that people don't always realize. He's got very much in his background, a great father and a wonderful husband. He reflects not only his accomplishments but also the enduring respect and gratitude of the people he has served. So with that being said...
Jim? Got the key to the city?
All right.
I thought I was gonna have to turn my keys in to see. I thought I was gonna have to turn my keys in to see.
We have a new special guest also joining us with us this evening and I'd like to welcome retired North Carolina State Senator Rick Gunn for another special recognition.
Oh, Lord.
It is great to be here tonight with friends and family to present Mayor Jim Butler, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. It is indeed my honor to be able to present the Order of the Longleaf Pine to Mayor Butler, whose exceptional leadership, vision, and commitment to public service have profoundly impacted the city of Burlington and the greater regions for decades. Just so you understand what the Order of the Longleaf Pine is about, I will read from their website. Since 1963, North Carolina's governors have reserved their highest honor, the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award, for persons who have made significant contributions to the state and their communities through their exemplary service and exceptional accomplishments. Persons named to the order become honorary North Carolina ambassadors with their names and award dates recorded on a roster maintained by the Order of the Longleaf Pine Society. The award criteria, extraordinary service. Recipients must have a proven record of extraordinary service to North Carolina. Significant accomplishments. The award honors those who have made significant contributions to their communities or the state through exceptional achievements and long-term dedication, which is measured by years completed in service. Y'all talked tonight and I won't repeat about his service here to the city of Burlington. But I can tell you that throughout his tenure in local government, Jim Butler has demonstrated an unwavering dedication to his community. His service, starting with traffic commission, I believe back in 2001 right up to our honorable mayor today, just reflects a longstanding investment in the city's infrastructure, safety, and livability, values that have carried through every level of his civic engagement. I think it's safe to say that Jim has had a full plate. Would you agree? No, not Jim. Jim realized, being such a visionary, that to make Burlington grow and prosper, you had to have a regional presence. That's why you see Jim serving on boards like the Board of Trustees of Alamance Community College and the Piedmont Triad Regional Council and part. That's why you see him working with Graham and Burlington on their NPO. That's why he stayed active legislatively with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. This just further demonstrates his thoughtful approach to policy, fiscal responsibility, and regional planning. Now, we all now after hearing that would agree that Jim has had a full plate. No, not Jim. Jim realized that he is blessed. He's blessed with great friends, great family, a great community. And Jim realized that it was his responsibility to give back to the community that has been so good to him. Jim served for years for the Boy Scouts of America Old North State Council. He had a term as board chairman of the United Way. He was greatly involved in the Aliment Citizens for Education. All this does is showcase his deep belief in strengthening communities, communities through mentorship, philanthropy, and education. Now, I will tell you, he did have a full plate. I won't fool you anymore, but by the way, he also happens to be a senior executive director of one of the major automobile networks in the state of North Carolina as a full-time job and he still was able to offer so much back to our community. In every role, Jim Butler exemplifies the qualities of a true servant leader. Integrity, humility, and a tireless commitment to improve the lives of others. His contributions have left a lasting legacy on the city of Burlington and beyond. But I'll tell you what, it pales in comparison, all of this, to his devotion and love for his family and his friends. It's for these reasons I am proud to present Jim Butler, the Order of the Longleaf Pine, one of North Carolina's highest honors. His decades of public service, volunteerism, and professional excellence embody the very spirit of this award and the values it represents. So at this time, Mayor Butler, I'd like you to join me, with me here at the podium with your lovely wife, Kim, and the family, if you will, as I present the award. State of North Carolina, Josh Stein, Governor. Reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Mayor James Bryan Butler, I do by these presents confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine. With the rank of Ambassador Extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the fall in North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the wheat grows strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the Old North State. Signed, Josh Stein, Governor, December 2nd, 2025.
I've thought many times over the last few months what I would, might share with tonight, what tonight might be like. I made a joke today, I said, well, I've always, now I know what it's like to be mayor for a day, because the day was my last day. But the one thing that, that kept coming to me was something that was brought up by Harold tonight and Senator Gunn said the same thing, and it's the value of my family. And there is no greater support system. And none of this would have been possible, none of the things that I've been able to do for our community, even though sometimes I don't think I do enough. And I didn't grow up with a bunch and I know a lot of people that didn't. And I just wanted to help them. It is as simple as that. Without them, without my family, I couldn't have done that. There's just nothing that really resonates with me, other than the fact that my family sacrificed over and over and over. So you could hear what Senator Gunn said. There's a lot of things I didn't make it to and a lot of things that I forgot about and you don't get a do-over. But we were represented, the city of Burlington was represented by all Butlers, not just Jim. Our kids, Megan was 13 when I first got elected, I think Nathan probably 11, Grayson, 9, 7, 7.
Good job. Missed a couple of those years, didn't you? That third one messes you up.
But they didn't sign up for this, Kim and I did. Kim and I signed up for it. We knew it was gonna be hard and we had to reposition our lives every time there was a campaign or every time I decided we need to do this or we need to do that. Or if by city-appointed boards that we are required to serve on take time, I had to sit down with Kim and say, all right, you're gonna have to handle this or that. And she never once said no, she never once got mad. She never once said, this is enough, you gotta quit. She just said, we'll make it work. And we signed up for that as a team, but the kids didn't sign up for it. They were kinda part of the package, but they never wavered. They represented the city of Burlington without fault or flaw. I don't know what else I could say, other than, when I grew up, I'm gonna be just like It's a tough thing. Sometimes you look back and you think, boy, I wished I could have done more for them, but we did a lot and we shared a lot and we carved out time, but the sacrifice of public office, certainly with the family and certainly with the family of the age of our kids growing up. And then Nick came along in January and he, he married my daughter and he didn't know what he was getting into. He's probably happiest day of his life. And my sister, Tricia Christman, is here with her husband, Michael, who, uh, they understood that they were part of this too and it became a family affair and we took it serious. It was not, it was not a game. This is what we do. We represent the city of Burlington every day, every time, without fail, no exceptions, strive for 10. And I think the one thing I won't tell you is how much I love you and how much I appreciate you for letting me do this. And then if I look around, he's not here tonight, I think a card game got in his way of being here, but he's gonna be with me later on. But my buddy Corbin Sapp, who was my treasurer, Ashley's here, his wife, day one, he was my treasurer, day one, every time I called him and said, Corbin, I'm gonna do this again, you wanna do it again? He said, of course I am. Signed right up. It takes commitment and a support. Not knowing he was gonna be here, I had Senator Rick Gunn on my list, a guy that was always in my inner circle, a guy that I've been best friends with for decades, a guy that, I'll tell you a quick story. We were playing golf and he got a phone call from Senator Berger and said, I've got some appropriated funds for the city of Burlington. Do you think you could use them? And Rick says, I'm riding with a council member right now. Let me ask him. You remember this?
I do.
He said, Jim, what if we could get a big old pile of money for the city of Burlington? What would you do with it? I said, I know exactly what I'd do with it. I'd have to get council's approval, but I would spend it on a new pool at North Park. Those of you that participate in that pool at North Park, without that man, it wouldn't have happened. Without that relationship, it wouldn't have happened.
Thank you.
And without understanding what your community needs, it wouldn't have happened. And I can tell you stories like that and, and we've gotta wrap things up. But a few more things. One is, I wanna tell you how proud I am to serve as a nonpartisan representative on a nonpartisan board. Not one day, not one time, have I allowed partisan politics to influence a decision or a posture that had to be taken. Right is right, wrong is wrong, and wrong will never be right and we gotta do what's right. We've seen unparalleled economic growth. We just signed a deal for a billion dollars. When that's fully online, it's gonna be $4 million nearly of tax revenue annually to the city of Burlington. We prepared and we executed. We leaned on a growing economy, always, and Harold and I have had a lot of these discussions, but in 18 years of elected service, we raised taxes one time and we lowered taxes one time. And we've been balanced and flush and healthy financially along the way. Who does that? That's the benefit. I've served on nine different councils, nine different makeups of councils. I had Beverly get me the pictures. I've served with six city managers, not that we ran a bunch off, including interim six city managers. So I can tell you, I've seen a thing or two. And no, we were not always perfect, but I do wanna read something. There's a quote by Jim Collins that says, "Good is the enemy of great." And that's one of the key reasons that we have so little that becomes great. We don't have great schools principally because we have good schools. We don't have great government principally because we have good government. Few people attain great lives in large part because, because they just say it's easy to settle for a good one. So the theory is that good is the enemy of great. And I could not agree more, but I've always had a theory. Perfect is the enemy of great too. Think about that. Good's the enemy of great, but perfect is the enemy of great. So the moral to the story is just be great. And what I can tell you is, we had a great government. And city staff are the best I've ever worked with. I'd take a bullet for each and every one of them. And no, we were not perfect. I was not perfect as an elected leader and they were not always perfect as staff members, but what we did is we collaborated and we had conversations and we solved real problems like real grown men and women and we did it with dignity and... like real grown men and women, and we did it with dignity and respect. We were great, and I am so very proud of that. And I would challenge our new council to, I'm not worthy of giving advice, but I would challenge you to sustain a cohesive nature that's been established, that I've experienced as long as I've been elected. I tell you to embrace our staff, communicate with them, listen and learn, and make decisions after reviewing all the possible outcomes. I always had two thoughts in mind: is it sustainable, and what are the unintended consequences? And if I checked those two boxes, I tried to drive on. I would challenge you to keep politics out of a nonpartisan government, and I would challenge you to love one another, even in the tough times, because it takes a team to make it work, and we've got a great team here. So to city staff, I love you, and to one person that I really, don't really know what to say, but Beverly Smith, I call her the great one. She's the one that can read my mind, and between her and my wife, you want to talk about a schedule, they can pack one together. And to Haley and Morgan and John, they were probably as petrified as they've ever been the night I walked out after the Hold L.A.'s USA announcement, and there was 100 microphones there, and I stepped up to the podium and started talking off the cuff. I'm sure they were nervous, but a greater group I've never witnessed. And now that Bob Patterson is on board as a city manager, Bob and I have been together the entire length of time. That's relevant, historical relevance. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you, the city of Burlington. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to share my feelings about that, and I want everybody to know I love you, and I always did it for you, and I hope you think I did a good job because I gave you 100%, not 99, 100 always. Thank you. We've got a little business to conduct, so we can let one group leave and go have round Next on our agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, I'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you, your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Next is the Approval of Minutes, November 17th, 2025 Work Session, November 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the Approval of the Minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is the Certification of Election, the Acceptance of the Alamance County Board of Elections and Guilford County Board of Elections official results for the municipal election held on November 4th, 2025. Oaths of Office of the newly-elected officials will be administered on December 2nd, 2025, at a meeting held in the Cummings High School Auditorium, beginning at 7:30. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
At this time, I'll confirm the acceptance of the Alamance County Board of Elections and the Guilford County Board of Elections official results for the municipal elections that were held on November 4th, 2025. Votes for Mayor Beth Kennett, 4,201. Rodney Wall, 3,646. Write-in votes were 12. Votes for council members, Ian Baltidas, 4,106. Jeffrey Smythe, 3,695. Donna Van Hook, 3,471. Harold Owen, 3,376. Write-in votes were 36. Let it be confirmed that Beth Kennett is a duly-elected mayor for a two-year term expiring in December 2027. Ian Baltidas and Jeffrey Smythe are the duly-elected council members for four-year terms expiring in December 2029. And like Mayor said, the Oath of Office for those elected officials will be held at the meeting at 7:30 at Cummings High School Auditorium.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Next on our agenda is Additions to the Consent Agenda. Item E, Appointments to the Burlington-Alamance Airport Authority. At this time, we'll recognize a motion for the additions of request to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Adoption of the Agenda this evening. Is there a motion for approval of the adoption with the additions?
Motion to approve with the additions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is the Consent Agenda. There is one item on the Consent Agenda that directly relates to my personal appointment to the Airport Authority, so I would entertain a motion, if possible, from council to recuse myself from the Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to recuse Mayor Butler from participation in the vote on Item E of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The Consent Agenda will be read. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the 2025 North Carolina Firefighters Association Annual Roster Certification pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 58-86-25. Item B, to approve an amendment to the Service Contract for the Operation of the Spay and Neuter Clinic of the Alamance County, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract addendum upon approval of city attorney and chief financial officer. Item C, to approve proposed 2026 fees and charges. Schedule changes to be effective January 1st, 2026. Item D, to approve the reclassification of the GIS Specialist Pay Grade 214 to GIS Coordinator Pay Grade 214 in the Planning Department, effective upon city council approval. Item E, to approve the following appointments to the Burlington-Alamance Airport Authority: City of Burlington seat Sam Powell, term expires 12/31/29; City of Burlington seat Jim Butler, term expires 12/31/29; and joint City of Burlington and Alamance County seat Keith Hall, term expires December 31st, 2029. I am recused from the vote, but at this time, I would entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. Next this evening, we have Public Comments.
Mayor Buckland, you have a question?
Yes.
On the certification of the election, if we could get a motion to approve it, as well as a second in the vote on that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Certification of election has been duly approved. Next this evening, we have Public Comments. There are no public comments, is that right, Beverly? And I think everybody in the room has heard enough of council comments this evening, and I greatly appreciate your time and your patience for allowing us to say a few words. Any other council comments this evening? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.